I'm going to call this meeting over. This has got to come off because my glasses are steaming up. We've got a special guest tonight. This is Randy Calico from Lexington, Kentucky. And I'm going to tell what you're doing here and then you're going to have the opening prayer of that.
Okay, that'd be great. My name's Randy Calico. I'm with Pilot Knob Missionary Baptist Church. And we're just south of Lexington in Berea, Kentucky, just a small town. So we've been coming up here four to five years now and teaming up with Pastor Steve and Lifeline Connect Church. Our church association has a partnership with NIBA, the Northeast Indiana Baptist Association. So we first came up, did some work in Fort Wayne area. But then we met up with Pastor Steve. So the past four years have been bringing mission teams to come up and help Steve, you know, do some ministry here in the community. We've done some backyard Bible schools and some door-to-door ministry. And then of course, some construction and life stuff there at their mission center. So we love Hicksville and my kids, I have 13 teenagers with me. And so we were just driving through and they're like, I think want to move to Hicksville. They love it here. So we're really glad to be here and thank you for letting me come here tonight.
Yeah, a few opening prayers.
Absolutely. Lord Jesus, we've come for you and I praise you and thank you, God, for who you are. And I thank you for this beautiful day that you've given. I thank you for this opportunity to be here. Father, your many blessings that you give us and we just don't want to forget them. And I just thank you, Father, for the many things that you've given us for life, for liberty, for, Father, just the freedom that we have. Father, I pray you to bless this council meeting, that you would watch over each and every individual as they make decisions for the village of Hicksville, that you grant them wisdom and discernment and guidance to seek your will. Father, we just pray for our nation, for our world and the times that we're in, Father. We ask for your hand of healing for the coronavirus. We ask, Father, for in times of distress and civil unrest, Father, for peace that only comes through Jesus Christ and that, Father, our nation will turn to you. Father, we just ask for your, again, for your guidance, for your blessing this evening. Be it Mayor Jones and the council here as they conduct business, that, Father, you would guide them in the direction you'd have for them to go. In the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Clipper.
Here.
Okay, have in front of you the regular council minutes of July 6th for your approval.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
Just a quick question on that. Did you verify with Troy that all of the verbiage on the revacing and the approving and all of that, is that all square?
On which part?
The sewer resolution, the ordinance of 2020-07, is that all? I didn't follow how that was all supposed to happen last meeting.
I'm 100% sure it's correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call.
Clipper.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay, have in front of you the, for your approval, the bills to be paid. Any questions?
I do, Mayor. E.J. Prescott, make it round numbers, $35,000 worth of meters. Are we about done buying meters?
Nope.
Nope. No, we've got a long ways to go yet.
I thought she, well, okay, I thought she, I said she's about done. One other question. For TTL associates, for the bore sampling, is that the new site or the old site?
That was for the, call it the new side for the CSX documents or whatever.
Something the CSX required of us to do for them that has nothing to do with our own, our own boring teams?
No, it's all working.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and that was all I had. And if nobody else has anything, I move we pay the bills.
Entertain a second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Upstate.
Juan.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Okay, have in front of you the minutes of the nuisance board. They met July 7th. Any questions?
Can I make a comment, Mayor? Eric had the kind of question that it looked like we were kind of in neutral there and the minutes do reflect that. But Mike is working on, it's either somewhere between 19 and 21 active cases that have been going on. They just weren't mentioned at that meeting. So things are really happening there.
Thanks, Ron. Any other questions on that? Okay, park board met July 15th. Minutes on your packet. Any questions?
Once again, Mayor, I got calls from people like Past Mayor Diane Collins and a lot of questions by my wife and different ones that are not happy with the fact that we're going to take out that McDonald's playground equipment. They say it is busy constantly. Spoke briefly with the shawls this evening and they agree it is busy, but that it is just filthy and not really, unless you hire one of those five-year-old kids that can fit in that thing to take a pressure washer with him, that it's a tough animal to keep clean. But I told the people that I spoke with in the past two weeks that I would bring it up at council, that it is an extremely busy piece of equipment down there in case anybody wants to rethink it or develop a process of cleaning or just take it out like it was already kind of agreed to.
So the park, we gave the blessing to take it out, right, the last meeting?
Yes. Yep.
And the park board agreed. So what's your thoughts? The shawls back there?
Us, we'd rather have it out because it's maintenance, it's hard to keep it clean.
Okay, so maybe is there thoughts of putting new equipment in or other playgrounds? Is there any thoughts on that?
No. And Cheryl told me that we also got to have the okay from the park.
The county. Yeah, the county.
Even have it taken out.
Okay.
The swing set and the slide that's good to take? I don't swing, I don't slide down there. Anyway, is that something that can be refurbished, cleaned up a little bit, painted? Or I know we can't have mentioned, people were kind of getting upset. There was, we got Froggy Park and we got the little park over by the Little League field. And that's it. There's nothing really on that side of the park where kids can play on if they got older siblings playing Little League or softball or, you know, high school ball. Something we can maybe take a look at putting some equipment back in that area.
Well, they came from the high school, from the elementary school.
Right, right.
So they're pretty old.
And we took out the old wooden one that had been down there for years. It was starting to get into street repair too. It's just, I love that.
Presbyterian churches.
Yeah, right.
That's why they tore that out.
Yeah.
But there's still some equipment down there from the old elementary school, right? Two?
No.
It's all gone.
That like old zip line and that big angle thing, that's all gone?
Yeah.
What's with you then, that fence they mentioned, Eric? Wasn't there some like green?
Session stand.
Cheryl should be something.
Session stand.
Metro Park Board wanted that.
Yeah, from the old elementary school.
That was.
The fence up around it?
Yeah.
How they have it all fenced in? I don't remember that part.
This is that rectangle. They got the big tube thing here, right here on this end of the fence.
They paid a third when I met with them, they paid a third to put the softball fence up?
They used it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the one that would be around the McDonald's playground.
Yeah, I never knew.
Has that always been there? I say that's what I thought too. I thought they put on the inside of it.
It's ready to come down, though it's falling apart. It's bad shape.
Might look at in some more playground equipment down the road.
I think that would be a wonderful thing.
I'm sorry.
That would be a wonderful thing.
I know there's been some talk from association that they've talked about another ball diamond in that area too.
I don't think there's enough.
You don't think there's enough room? They wondered that.
It has to be a little key ball on it.
They had talked, we had talked of trying to sell it while it's still erected and so hopefully they can take, if that produces any money, probably not much, but they can use that to buy something for that area to, for the kids that are there. But and I didn't want, I don't want, I wasn't trying to ruffle feathers or go back against what we'd already decided. But like I say, all the people that I talked to, I promised them I would bring it back.
Sure.
So just so I know what they have actually do besides McDonald's. The swings and the slide are going.
We didn't discuss that.
We didn't, we just talked about the playground. A little bit, maybe paint them, make them nicer.
I mean, we can keep them there. I just know very well.
Well, I guess next thing, who's going to contact the Metro Park Board before I have Mike start advertising?
I can do that.
I mean, I. I think the only meet wants a quarter, I think.
I have to find out.
It's on the website.
He quit.
Not?
No. He quit.
Is Ed Foster on anymore?
That I don't know.
It used to be him and Mike Lingam from Hicksville were the two reps.
Not sure if it is.
So any other discussion, thoughts?
More curious, just since you brought up the buying more equipment. Where did the funding from Froggy, that Froggy Park come from?
Donated, the city gave some money.
We build it because I was on the street department. Joanne Yoder kind of headed up that.
She did, and I was the one that helped with the payments and things. So that was a lot of donation and payment.
Yeah, there's people's names, they donated money.
There was grant money on that.
I don't think there was. Spearheaded that.
Joanne Yoder.
Okay.
She is, I don't know, they're getting, I was on the street department, so I wouldn't pay any attention.
Is Joanne Yoder, Betsy Babbinger, Laura Poling?
So it was, it was the community though that spent?
Well, they got ahold of somebody and generated some funds, but.
I think the city, if I remember right, it's probably been 18 years ago.
It would have been 20.
20, okay. I think we, the city donating maybe 20,000 for the project, if I remember right.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Just to get it started.
I know she talked with people, there's a Purple Park in Cedarville, you know? And that's how it got started.
Just modeled after, yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions, concerns? Okay, we'll move on. Council committee reports, got the water and sewer committee met July 8th. You have any?
We're just changing the rates. We talking with Jesse and Dawn and Troy and having their input on back with, you know, we want people to have fresh water and clean sanitary systems and good refuse. We have a number of people each month that shut off notices. And once they get that notice, they have to actually go out and put tags on the door. And once they get the tag, they come up and pay. We spend a lot of time and energy doing that each month. Most of them come up and pay once they get the tag notices. But we're going to increase that fee from $10 to $50. And if we physically have to go out and shut off their water and then they pay their bill after working with Dawn and to get their fees paid, we got to go back out and turn it on. We usually don't do that on the weekends. They usually would have to, if there's an issue with the water leak or different things, you know, they'd have to call the police department. But we're trying to keep people up to date on paying their fees, their bills on time. I know there's sometimes there are certain situations that are not in their control and we try to, that's what we can. Dawn works with people in those situations. But we need to kind of crack down on all the shut offs we do each month. And like I said, most of the time we don't do a lot of shut off their term, but actually tagging people for late bills after they have their grace period. So we run, done these recommendations to increase these charges. So we kind of could curtail that a little bit.
Do we have to have legislation to do that, policy?
Change to the policy, they just need to vote.
Any questions, concerns?
One thing, Mayor, is I think to save us, anybody that wants to talk to us about this on the street going, you know, what are you doing this, you know, just one or two guys? The number is about 65 a month. There's about 65, you know, give or take a few, every single month, they have to go to their house and put a red tag on. And from what has happened so far, that has been greatly reduced. So.
So it's not going to happen until, what did I say the date?
September.
September, so it's got a couple of months. The word will get out there, I'm sure.
And Dawn runs the utility department. Dawn, do you have any input on all this?
No, it was on the bills. So they will see it on their utility bills and you have to sign right and you'll put it up once you move.
Okay, thoughts?
Do we, do we want to do a straw vote to have it in the records that we all agree to this?
No, we need a real vote.
A real vote.
Okay, so.
We'll do a hay vote.
I'll entertain a motion to this effect.
I'll make that motion to increase the tag reads and the turn on, shut off and turn on fees.
A second.
I'll spoil you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Okay, administrators report, Kent.
Yeah, just a few things plus something came up just today. I'll pass along. First off, I'm sure everybody noticed the water pressure is back to normal. Finally got it back online last Thursday. We'll go through the legislation for the water sewer jobs during Troy's part. But we did get our OPWC grant agreement. I forget what day that came last week. Mayor signed it and I've got everything sent back in, so that was nice. The reminder about the new water tower and the less something changes, you guys have got it on the books for 2022. And since the south tower behind the library is basically a big antenna for everybody, people are going to figure out what we're going to do with it. And it's going to be a time-consuming, they can't just decide and then have it done in a week or whatever. So you probably ought to be talking to the people I have listed here and start getting ideas for how this is all going to come about because even if the other two that are using that metal link a media com, if they aren't even involved, we still got to do something with our own 911 stuff. So I guess I've got the names of all the contacts of people. You decide which committee you want involved with this. If they want to meet at some point, give me a half dozen dates and times. I'll contact all these people and then shuffle, see what dates work. But I'm sure this will wind up being more than a one-meeting discussion.
So we can kind of decide that. I'm looking toward the water sewer, since it is the water tower. What's your thoughts?
Man, I don't like that.
Aye, well.
My question is, hey Kent, can the sheriffs put their antennas on the tower at the park? Well, all I'll say is in the past years, everybody says that water tower is the perfect location for everybody's signal. Well, it's higher than. So and here again, before some of you guys were on council, council talked about when they tear that one down, us building a tower, renting it out. But the logistics of that are going to be tight because there ain't room to build one while you're taking the other one down. So yeah, I'm not sure what we do with our own 911. I don't know if you know much about it or not. I think our, it's not the mark system, our 911 setup, whatever that might be called, is through that one electrical box on the bottom. It's got the air conditioner to keep it cool and all that. So I think that's part sheriff, part us. I don't know how that all originally got put in. It's been there for years. So yeah, it's just something we got to figure out if the other entities are just going to want to build their own somewhere. But for years, I've heard that's the best location to get a signal in town, but.
Not for long.
Well, it'll be here before you know it. And that's why this is something.
That building underneath the tower used to be the head in for cable TV.
Yeah, your satellites are too. So anyway.
I think it still is, isn't it?
Satellite's still there.
Yeah, that other building, Media Com's got their stuff in there.
Well, my thoughts are how the water and sewer.
I think we definitely should take a minute to look at the village putting up a tower. Rent the thing back to anybody that wants to use it and leave our water towers unmolested and.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I might not be here, but I would not put anything back on a water tower ever again. We had.
Anytime you want to have a horrible time or meeting. You have to get those guys to, hey, you not want to move there.
Yeah, I'm totally against, totally against molesting another water tower.
Well, anyway, you can let me know whenever you decide which committee you want.
I guess I can decide water and sewer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be right on.
Well, anyway. Whenever you guys meet, I say just come up with, because we're juggling six different.
We talked about this years.
Maybe a half dozen dates at least.
Well, we talked about this years ago and I did contact, it was just FPD, and they had a public relations director. They said they wouldn't possibly be interested in, could put up a tower, like, you know, build them right here. It'd be nice to just build it there, bring it here, set it and get the antennas put back on it. But to me, I think all the entities that are currently using that, our current water tower should be a part of that, that cost.
Right, oh definitely, or a lease. Either a one-time payment or a lease. And you're correct, we can do the Fort Worth Tower, we can talk with them. We can also get ahold of the people that rent ground from us for their tower and kind of get in, maybe they'd want to put the tower up at their expense and lease back to us, who knows?
Okay, well, we've got some time, but it'll be here before you know it. Okay, you got some little things, Kent?
Yeah, the three BWC claims, I don't want to detail on that. I said two of them are getting wrapped up, the third one, it's going to be more of a pain than I thought. Liability claim, haven't heard the status of that lately. I don't think it was major, but I've been dealing with that. Before I get to the part with the backflow things, just received the CSX agreement today for the well field. So our insurance company is getting around the binders we need. I sent the contract, the agreement order to Troy so he could start reviewing it. It's going to cost anywhere from $7,050, maybe to $8,300. Depends on what we actually have to have. So once that's all sorted out and we get it sent back.
To go under, that's what it's going to cost?
That's the first part of what it's going to cost.
I was going to say, I'm shocked. That's dirt cheap.
There'll be a second problem. When they start doing the construction, you'll be paying for flag.
So that's the, that's the original field.
Yeah, yeah, so they marked the plans with no exceptions. So they didn't come back with, you got to change 500 things, which I'm shocked. That's amazing. So once I get all that stuff around, I'll get it back to CSX. And then they can probably start working on final plans. Until you know how you're going to fund this, I wouldn't be starting anything here in 2020.
It's a million-dollar project. But at least CSX doesn't seem to be the holdup.
And then the last big part there, I had Jesse write up a little blurb about the water backflow prevention, cross-connection control practices that we have to start doing according to Ohio EPA. And they do expect us to have 100% response in one form or another. And they will come check our records so you can't. So they'll be in this next batch of water bills.
That went out today.
I mean, I did one just for practice. It took me 30 seconds to do it.
Because you're amazing. You're just amazing.
No, they're like, you fill a name, address. You can skip the meter size and the something else as far as the meter. And then you just check a box. Now, if you got something illegal and you check that box, you know.
What would be considered illegal? Just asking for a friend.
They got a whole list of cross-connections and things that we need to be aware of. But the kicker is if they do not return these, then the water department will have to go door-to-door. And we might need about 16 policemen at that point. I guarantee you, there'd be some people I would not want to go to their door because they're not just going to meekly, no, please go away. They're going to not be very happy.
They're not as charming as we are, is what you're saying?
There's a lot of people that do not want anybody in their house, period. And you'd have to make individual appointments. And so if people just fill these out and return them, it's going to save a whole lot of headache.
So the employees would have to go inside, check, or they can't ask these questions? They can't ask these questions?
That takes a search warrant, doesn't it?
No, we have, no.
Wouldn't it, Doc? Wouldn't it take a search warrant to get inside somebody's house?
You can't just go in anybody's house.
I thought maybe just ask the question, just like the census.
No, we have, they have to actually go in.
Please verify there's nothing else tied into it or anything.
So you can submit a survey.
Or if somebody comes out on your door. They have to inspect the plumbing. So if you're growing marijuana in your basement, you better just fill out the survey. I'm just saying, it's opening a whole can of worms if we have to go into people's houses.
So what about the trailer court? You're talking 70-some trailers, only one meter.
Oh.
Do they all get a letter?
They didn't get the letter.
They, they didn't get the letter?
They've got regular back.
It's commercial, right? Okay, so that helps.
So this will be the residential.
Okay.
Still, there's.
Could we send the employees with a stack of surveys and say, fill this out and hand it back to me?
I don't know if that's EPA or not, I could ask Jesse.
And then how does the EPA know if?
Yeah, they filled it out. Well, they'll, they'll check her records.
Well, I'm not saying that, but how do they know that, I mean, if it's filled out by the customer, then it's filled out by the customer, I guess, at the end of the day.
Well, I know there's some, I disagree with this anyway from EPA. They didn't think this one through very well. Because yes, if I do have a cross-connection, let's say I'm still on a well and I hooked up City Water to that well, am I going to check that box? Yes, I've got a cross-connection. I mean, if I'm halfway smart, I check, nope, no cross-connection. And nobody's going to come in my house and know the difference. So EPA is assuming everybody's honest. Sorry, they're not. A lot of people are, but you're going to have some that are not.
So what are the penalties for non-compliance, I guess?
We'd get a probably a notice of violation for not following through.
When's this have to be done? Did I see it?
Well, see, and I think she's waiting for some clarification because of the COVID thing. You want to go in people's houses. So I mean, when this actually starts.
So it's coming up maybe next year?
Oh, no.
I don't see a date.
It's in your mail this week or next week.
But as far as the homeowner, I mean, the only, the only people that are going to suffer for not having it done is this village, correct? The homeowner. If he refuses to let somebody in, it's no skin on his back, right?
I don't think I've seen a date anywhere.
I didn't see it. No, there's nothing.
Okay.
But no, it's just, I know income surveys have never worked well and some of that stuff, but.
EPA's got to read, it's crazy if they think they can get 100%.
Yeah, anyway, so that's it in a nutshell. So it's going to be a lot nicer if people spend 30 seconds and fill something out, whether they like government or not, you know? But anyway.
Mike could put a big front page ad in his newspaper, real chart that says, help your village. Help your village, fill it out.
And if anything changes on this, if she finds out anything different, we all let you know. But at this point, this is what we have to do.
Okay, any other questions for Kent? Here's a report. Okay, thank you, Kent. Solicitors report, I guess I'm going to do that, Troy's not here. The first two ordinances, 2020-06 and 2020-07, that's both of those have been tabled. Okay, so we're going to go first reading, Resolution 2020, Day 17, by caption only, to enter contract with Holenbrink, is how you say that, Holenbrink? Excavating for West High Street Waterline Project and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Second and final reading, Resolution 2020, Day 17, by caption only, to enter a contract with Holenbrink excavating for the West High Waterline Project and declaring. Yeah, I can move. Second. Yeah, second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Okay, first reading, resolution 2020-18, by caption only, to enter contract with Holenbrink, excavating for the West High Street Sewer Line Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second and final reading, resolution 2020-18, by caption only, to enter a contract with Holenbrink, excavating for the West High Street Sewer Line Project.
Motion to move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Clipper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second and final reading, resolution 2020-18, by caption only, to enter a contract with Holenbrink, excavating for the West High Street Sewer Line Project.
Motion to move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Clipper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Okay, pending items, Cheryl, you have some report?
Yeah, I talked to Troy today.
Okay.
He's taking care of the Haynes. The two bandits contract is in the works. The annexations have been approved, both of them by the commissioners, as of July 2nd, so they have to sit for 60 days. So in our first meeting, the day after Labor Day in September, is when you can vote on them to approve the annexations. And I already talked to Justin and gave him the timeline. And, oh, the downtown sidewalk legislation goes along with the two bandits, it's for everybody, for all the businesses to use the sidewalks. It will include the six feet that they have to keep free.
Okay.
And so Troy will bring all that next time, but he's sick, so he couldn't come.
Any comments, questions for Cheryl or Troy? Okay, department heads, please, report.
I'm talking to a reporter, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Fire an EMS, I don't see anybody here. I see they're using the new ambulance, I saw it go out today, so it's up and running. Park director, Val?
I just have one thing I'd like to bring forward. We've been having kids or teenagers or whatever messing around at Adventure Alley down there, dumping garbage. They also got into the porta potty down there, ripped off the hand sanitizer, called the toilet. I just wonder if it could be controlled. Any more?
Do you lock that at night? Guess I wouldn't keep them out, but I was just curious. It's open, it's curfew. And I thought we had cameras down there?
We do, but you can't see.
In the dark, you can't see who you're doing it to.
That's happened just once, one night?
Twice.
In the last two weeks?
Porta johns have been vandalized two or three times, now they got the door where you can't close it. Then they just throw papers all over the place.
Now, those are leased, right, the porta johns?
Yeah.
We've been talking to him, and he's upset with the two of them.
Sure.
He's got to put money back in.
I hate going in one of them when it's an emergency, let alone just going there and tear stuff up.
Well, step up patrol down there, appreciate it.
Speaking of that, how do we know about the porta john? Because we have a regular restroom closed because of COVID, but porta johns are more sanitary? It doesn't, somebody asked me that, and I said, you know what? It don't make sense to me, but they're giving them a place to use to wash.
They don't have to clean them like I would have to.
Rob Becker's, yeah. But you are cleaning the porta johns, I mean?
He does.
He does.
Does he?
Well.
Well, we thought of moving up, moving the porta john up around the other restroom up there, where if they mess with it, we can at least might be able to see it on camera better. Because we have a clear down by the.
Okay, any other questions for Val or Gary?
On any of that stuff that, where we have cameras, can we somehow put a light that they can't bust? Put a globe on it, unbreakable globe, so that there is lighting?
Will you move it, is there more lighting where you're going to move it?
It's still hard to see, no matter, I mean, it's still hard to see on the cameras late at night, they're, I mean, we had cameras on the pool building and somebody broke in there that one time, and we could see what they were wearing, a black hoodie, black clothes, we couldn't make out face recognition or anything.
Well, then we need to upgrade. I mean, there's no sense in having whatever that stuff costs down there, and you can't see it. Either do away with it, or nobody, the majority of people don't do vandalism and crimes in the middle of the afternoon.
Are those HD cameras down there now?
They're, yeah, they're three or four megapixel, if I remember right, I think it's three megapixel cameras. Well, I think if you moved them up to by the, even by the new restroom building, that may help prevent, prevent some of that.
Yeah.
Closer to the cameras, anyway.
Right.
So even perception may help there.
I don't really know the layups, does that make it a lengthy walk for somebody?
Probably.
It'd make it closer.
Closer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long ways away right now from where the cameras are located.
It's just easier for him to clean it down there, so he can come around that corner road.
Will he fit underneath the over with his?
That should.
Will it?
I think so.
Are we liable for the damage to the porta johns? Is that part of the lease?
That's his problem.
Okay, that's good. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Cheryl, you're up.
You have your fund balance report, I also put in the deferred comp report for the second quarter, and a letter for MediaCom where they're removing another channel. And then I have some other information, that's just FYI. So far, the pool has brought in $5,941 and has spent $8,391. On the tax side, I gave you this information in May, but in 2019, we had 2,043 to be filed, and when the season was over on April 16th, Kim had 709 nonfilers. When the season ended this year on July 15th, we still have 610 nonfilers.
Wow.
And of course, there can be no collection activity till after October 15th, just in case one of them has a, an extension, because they don't have to tell us they have an extension. So we just can't do anything until then. And on the utilities, we already talked about this a little bit, there were 60 tags put out, that ended up with only two shut offs, and one that went to the committee. So that's amazing.
Very effective.
It's not a.
I'm surprised. Okay, any questions for Cheryl? My report, you told about the MediaCom letter, right? Did you mention that?
Media?
MediaCom.
MediaCom, yeah. My report, I've had a lot of meetings with the health department, had two today. As of today, there's 76 confirmed cases. And you know, we were yellow, there's four, yellow, orange, red, purple. We were yellow, went up to orange just this week. And the reason is, the numbers went up a week ago, I got to look here, last week there were 12 new cases, and the week before there were only four, so the numbers are going So they're looking, they think it might go to level red, good possibility next week, which is scary thought. Because right now, it's recommended to wear masks. If it gets to red, then it's going to be, I hate to say the word mandatory. So that's what's coming. The one meeting I had today, I'm on the task force for Defiance County, that was at two, then I had one at four, and that's where I got all this information. But the health department's very concerned. We're close to Fort Wayne, I think it's coming this way. And it's not just Defiance County, it's the counties around us, Huffman, Williams.
Henry's a lot.
Henry really got hit.
Yeah.
They had a, I think it's called Leisure Time Winery, they had 22 cases come out of that just last week. So, I mean, I took my mask off, I know, but people need to mask up, use sanitizers as much as you can. And they also reported that the Ohio National Guard is going to test nursing homes in Defiance County. And at this time, it's just going to be employees only. And so that's something that's going to happen this week, so. Anything else needs to be brought before this council tonight?
I just wanted, Mayor, I wanted to let everybody know that we're having a police fire and EMS meeting on July 26th, it's this Wednesday, at 5:15.
And you're discussing, any idea?
Let somebody go.
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Yeah, I went to that meeting a week ago, at Mark Township, yes. So, okay.
One thing, we had talked last time, Kent, I don't know if you ever had anything, hadn't heard anything from the last couple of weeks.
You got to leave him alone.
I know, but I don't, we want to use this man's brain and let him train somebody sometime. And he said July or August, and next meeting will be August, that's what I was, and we're going to, we want to put it out there for at least 30 days, trying to get a good.
Unless he stays on for a couple more years.
Yeah, I kind of that too, I was just.
Well, I made the decision, when the time comes, he's going to come to me.
Okay.
And then, I think I told you, I'm pretty sure I did.
You told us all, you're going to do the interviews and cut it to three?
Yes, or two or three, whatever. So, and when he comes to me, that's when it'll happen, so.
Perfect.
My plan is another three and a half years.
I second that, Mayor.
Okay.
So?
So anyway, that's kind of where it sets. Just makes the process, the weed out, all the interviews, not interview, yeah, cut down the interviews and I'll kind of go through them, and then maybe I'll have the personnel[1714.33]